This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meetings for Wednesday, May 15. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by East Hampton Media on charter channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Council participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid and the order extended until March 2025, which allows us to do so. I'll remind both the members of the city council and the public participating in remote remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of this meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham here, Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Rod Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
Here.
And Owen Zaret.
Here.
The Pledge of Allegiance at the moment silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Excuse me. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2024. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion pauses. Public speak time. This is the opportunity for the public to ask if there's any concern or questions to the council. We are not allowed to answer for any, any topic that is not listed as a public hearing. I will give you three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record and start.
My name is Maryam Ansara, 359 Main Street, and I'm really glad to be here. I want to say as a premise that I have been stopped in the street after appearing in city council meetings, public speak, and told that I only live in East Hampton because I can't afford North Hampton. And I want to say that in 2006, I, when I moved, decided to move out here from Cambridge, I chose East Hampton because it was not North Hampton. And what I want to say is really from the heart, so I hope I don't hurt anybody's feelings. I always have felt that the pledge of allegiance was superficial rallying call around ill-thought-through and superficial conceptions of what country and civic allegiance means, kind of like what Hallmark has done to some of our most important holidays, more marketing than substance. But until Councillor Denham read us a more complete history of the origins of the pledge of allegiance and of the man who wrote it, I actually had no idea of the extent of racism, xenophobia, and misogyny that went into it. And so I was astounded when the councillors who heard this simply seemed to turn a blind eye and deaf ear to what they had just heard and voted willy-nilly to continue using it at the start of each meeting. I think we are better than that, and I think as a city, we can do better than that. I think we should have a pledge of allegiance, one that reflects our true values as a city. Just in the 18 years I've lived here, we have declared ourselves a welcoming city, embracing and not rejecting immigrants, declared our rejection of nuclear weapons, and reaffirmed our membership in Mayors for Peace, called for peace in Ukraine, declared ourselves against all forms of discrimination, declared ourselves against antisemitism specifically, called for a ceasefire in Gaza, and there are other resolutions and ordinances that have expressed our values as residents of East Hampton and of the United States. I believe we should have a pledge of allegiance to these values and reaffirm this allegiance at every meeting. I offer to work with anyone who would like to craft this pledge and bring it back to the city council for consideration and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else participating remote? Seeing none. Communication for elected officials, boards and committees. Any city council have anything for tonight? Please say yes. Mayor's communication is not here. Correspondent from the president or the vice president. Does the vice president have something? Please say yes. Yes, now. Report from committees. Let's see. Finance. Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have met a number of times since we last came here to go over our budget. The city council was, excuse me, my allergies are killing me. We were able to vote unanimously to recommend the whole budget to the council on our Monday meeting, so I guess we didn't, have we already set a public, so we should probably do that for now for the next meeting, right?
Yep. And that's June 5th.
June 5th. Okay, so I will make a motion to set a public hearing for the FY25 municipal budget for June 5th at 6:15 PM in these chambers.
Second. I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing for the budget of 2025 at our next meeting, June 5th at 6:15 in these chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion pauses. Counselor Peak.
We also will be meeting to discuss a bunch of the appropriations in our new business next week at 5:00 PM. That's the, sorry, the 22nd at 5:00 PM. And we also have a whole bunch of things on our agenda which we're going to be talking about in approximately eight minutes, so.
Thank you. Counselor Peak. Public safety. Counselor Sarit.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Please.
We met yesterday for a site visit.
No.
I'll speak into the microphone. Can you hear me now? The Public Safety Committee of the East Hampton City Council, how much more time do we have? Met yesterday. We had a, we had a site visit at the corner of Union and Main Streets to review some no parking signs that are currently under discussion for either amendment or removal, and then met back at 6:45 in Room 1. After reviewing the signs that were out on the street and consulting our current traffic rules and order, we proposed a couple things. One, there's a parking, a no parking sign on Union Street with the exception of Sundays from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's right after you turn on to Union from Main Street. And due to the limitations of the roadway there, we determined that that should be no parking at all times. That was recommended to the council to zero. There's another sign on Main Street if you're traveling westerly from the corner of Main and Union, and that is six or so spaces as Main Street joins up with Park Street and the library. That is no parking at any time except from Sundays from 8:00 to 1:00. And realizing how parking is at a premium in the city and that those spaces could be used at all times, we made a recommendation unanimously to zero to remove the, to make that parking at all times. That is what we will be bringing forward to the public hearing, which was previously scheduled for our next meeting in June, but due to a number of other items on the agenda, and so as not to encumber the agenda too much, I would recommend that this time that, are we meeting on Juneteenth? When are we meeting?
20th.
Are we meeting on the 20th? That, that meeting be moved to.
The public hearing.
The public hearing be moved to our meeting on the 20th at 6:15. So I'll make a motion at this time to move the public hearing, which was previously scheduled for June 5th, to June 20th at 6:15 in these chambers to amend the traffic rules and order.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the public hearing previously scheduled for June 5th to June 20th, 6:15 in these chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion pauses.
We also noted during this discussion that it is helpful that we will be reviewing all the traffic rules and orders as there are a number of signs, both no parking and otherwise, as well as traffic patterns are not adequately documented, and we will continue to dive into that item, which continues to be on our agenda. I will, we should be meeting again on June 11th at 6:00 PM, and we'll get to our agenda items at that time. I think that's, that's all I got, Mr. President. I tried to get you to.
Room number one?
I'm assuming, yes. Well, to be determined, but probably room number one.
Okay.
And thus concludes.
Thank you. Appointments. Counselor Riley.
Do we want to?
Pass to her.
Yeah, do you, are you, do you have everything in front of you, Counselor Smith?
Counselor Smith.
Perfect. Thank you.
I do, yes. Okay, so the Appointment Subcommittee met on the 13th to consider the mayoral appointment of Cindy Speary with a term expiration date of 12/31/26. Just as a background, Ms. Speary is an Oxbow Gallery member. She's a local artist, and she teaches at the Hilltown Cooperative Charter School in East Hampton. We voted 2 to 0 to move the consideration of the appointment of Cindy Speary with this term expiration of 12/31/26 to the full council. So I would like to make a motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move the appointment of Cindy Speary with a term expiration of 12/31/26 to the full council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Cindy Speary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. Motion pauses.
And thus concludes.
Counselor Riley, we have to extend one of the items.
Give me just a second. I've got it right.
Thank you, Counselor Smith.
This is for the request to review process?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So in the form of a motion, I'd like a 90-day extension to review the mayoral and city council appointment process.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend this item for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Motion pauses. And the next meeting will be?
So we have a peculiar schedule because of how many Wednesdays there are in this month, so it will be on Monday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM in Conference Room 2, which is right here behind City Council chambers, and thus concludes.
Thank you. Counselor Derby.
Mr. President, I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion pauses. Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, we have a whole bunch of appropriations here. The first few we have concern the fire department. So the first one is an appropriation of $197,050 from Free Cash to fund a variety of firefighter, fire department items, including fire department overtime, full-time supervisory, full-time clerical, captain's grade, fire medical, fire uniforms, fire equipment, fire education, training. The Finance Committee did vote to recommend this appropriation 3 to 0. I could go through the details, but it might be best to, given all the things, if anyone has any questions, to just have our fire chief maybe say a couple words about it. Chief Norris?
Good evening, everyone. Again, when we met with the Finance Committee last week in regards to these items here, basically, a lot of it revolved around the fire department overtime. And when you look at the fire department overtime, typically over the last five years, we averaged around anywhere from $220,000 to $235,000 a year for overtime. And when you talk about overtime in particular, again, there's really two driving factors that affect that overtime, and those two factors are injuries and also family medical leave, both of which are hard to predict and plan for. In terms of stopgaps, measures that we put in place in terms of managing that overtime to the best of our abilities, we have over the last three years now used a training officer position that's at a captain rank. So in the event a captain is out there in the day shift, that training captain slides over to cover that and no overtime. The other thing we did, and it happened this year as well back in the fall time, was we had two people slated to go to the Mass Fire Academy back in November. At that time, we had multiple people out on family medical leave and injuries. So in order to better manage the shift staffing, we deferred those two spots and didn't send them until February. So those are the driving factors in terms of your overtime and how we're trying to do cost containment at the administrative and operational level. Questions on anything?
Does any, Counselor have any questions to the chief?
Right.
I just want to make a comment. Seeing the, the overtime, I see that number is going lower compared to other years. Usually, we, when we have a request, usually it's a lot of money. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for doing your job and saving people's money, attendees' people's money, and I appreciate you doing a really good job trying to keep those numbers really low.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public want to participate in this appropriation? Have any comments or questions? Anyone from participating remote have any comments? Seeing none. Counselor Peak.
All right. I'll make this in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $197,050 to be transferred from Free Cash to be transferred to Fire Department Overtime, $90,000. Full-time supervisory, $11,500. Full-time clerical, $3,400. Captain's grade, $20,500. Fire medical, $6,000. Fire uniforms, $9,000. Fire equipment, $46,650. Fire education/training, $10,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes. Fire Department Overtime, cover contractual costs for minimum shift staffing. Fire Department supervisory, full-time supervisory, cover increases for contract renewals. Full-time clerical, cover increases for contract change. Captain's grade, cost incurred for firefighters working out of grade during injury of captains. Fire medical, cost for onboarding new firefighters for medical evaluations. Fire uniforms, cost for onboarding new firefighters for uniforms. Fire equipment, excuse me, cost for purchasing new protective clothing for five new firefighters, and annual service for SCBA's, hose, ladder, aerial truck, and extinguishers. Fire education, contractual requirements for reimbursement of personnel for tuition.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation, $190,050 for the fire services, medical, uniform, equipment, and education. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Motion pauses. Counselor Peak.
Okay, so the next one is $60,500 from Free Cash. This is covering ambulance overtime emergency, ambulance supplies, and miscellaneous technical services. So the ambulance overtime and emergency is mostly, it covers contractual callbacks when there's a call that has to go to West Hampton. We have an agreement with them. Ambulance supplies, as I think we've all been briefed by the chief on a couple of occasions, there's, I would suspect a little bit of price gouging, but in any case, for one reason or another, the prices for a lot of these things, gloves and whatnot, have been going up quite a bit recently. And miscellaneous technical services, this is the, for the EMS, there's a billing company that collects the revenue when, when we have the ambulances come out, and ultimately, we get that revenue, but it doesn't go straight back to the fire department, and the fire department has to pay their bills, so it just sort of, we have to pay it now even though we're going to get the revenue they collected. Chief, did I miss anything? Oh, great.
Chief, do you want to add something else about the supplies? I know that the gloves are very expensive, but I don't think the glove costs $30,000. Can you please explain a little bit better what kind of supplies we're buying with this?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, when you look at EMS supplies in terms of the ambulance service and the requirements of our ambulance license in particular, I always, when I talk about this, I talk about soft supplies and hard supplies. Soft supplies are your disposable supplies. Hard supplies are the ones that get reused for recurring calls, the mattresses, the stretchers, the cables on the cardiac monitor, things like that. This $30,000 is mostly going towards your soft supplies or disposables. Also, when you talk about supplies, it's not just the fire chief or East Hampton Fire Department saying that it would be nice to have these supplies on the ambulance. We have a list that's given out by the state that's a requirement when they come to inspect our ambulance. Those supplies have to be there, or we get deficiencies, and they could shut our ambulance license down literally. So that's the $30,000 is to replenish those ongoing supplies. This year, that lineup was funded at $25,000, which is just over about a third of our actual need every year. So a lot of that money based on our vendors is going to get used up real fast. And I'm happy to entertain any other questions to help try to better understand it about that.
Counselor Kuzinski.
As we're talking about it, when you, when the ambulance goes to the hospital and they use supplies on the way to the hospital, pick up somebody and bring, do we take supplies from the hospital and pay the hospital? How does that all, that all work?
Legally, you can't pay the hospital. The hospital replenishes basically like your IV needles and some intubation tubes, and that's it. Over the years, based on the financial constraints, not only that municipalities are seeing, but even private for-profit institutions, they've cut back dramatically on what they used to give to services 20, 25 years ago.
Any other councillors? I do have a question. Why we are paying the EMS billing company from revenue collected for EMS, it was not part of the budget from last year, or?
No. So the lineup for third, for your contractual services, we have a third-party billing company. It's Colson Medical Billing out of Sutton, Mass. We have a five-year contract with them. We pay them 2.99% of what we actually collect in revenue. All the revenue for EMS goes into the general fund, and right now, our revenues that we're anticipating and projecting for this year are higher than initially projected. So I always, I kind of joke that with that lineup in particular, although it's, you know, you always try to contain costs, that's a good one to see going because you know more revenue is actually coming in. And to kind of close that one out, right now, if our projections hold true, we're going to be right around $1.5 million this year, and if you look back four years ago, it was at $700,000.
Thank you. Any councillor? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about these appropriations? Anyone participating remote? Seeing none. Counselor Peak. Thank you, chief.
All right, and I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $60,500 to be transferred from Free Cash to be transferred to ambulance overtime emergency, $14,500. Ambulance supplies, $30,000. Miscellaneous technical services, $16,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Ambulance overtime emergency, costs to cover contractual EMS callbacks in West Hampton. Ambulance supplies, cost to purchase required equipment and supplies based on DPH license. And miscellaneous technical services, cost to pay EMS billing company for revenue collected for EMS.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $60,500 for the ambulance overtime, supplies and technical services. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Motion pauses. Counselor Peak.
Okay, so the next appropriation is $33,000 from Free Cash for an injured-on-duty fire medical expense. And this is basically an old bill. I know we've, we've had a bunch of these in the past where there was an expense from the fiscal year '23 cycle, and the billing occurred after the fiscal year closed, so they weren't able to use those funds, like budget funds, to cover it because it's an old bill, so we're just going to have to use Free Cash, and this is a thing that happens, you know, pretty often, just because often bills will come a couple months later, so something happens at the end of the fiscal year. It's just a thing that can happen.
Any councillor have any questions, comments? Seeing none. Chief, you want to add something else, or? No? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment? I see Emily.
Hi, how are you? So I'll speak on behalf of the chief for this because this more comes out of the HR department than it does the actual fire department. So when we have someone who was injured on duty back a prior fiscal year.
Emily, just one second. Can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Emily Russo, I'm the Human Resources Director.
Thank you.
Yeah. So when we have someone who is out on injured-on-duty from a prior year, they can still incur medical expenses into the current existing year. We do, we have a $10,000 deductible for our injured-on-duty health insurance, and then after that, we typically pay out of pocket and get reimbursed from the insurance company, but that money then goes into general fund. So we do get reimbursed for these expenses at this time, but.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public participating remote? Seeing none. Counselor Peak.
All right, I'll make this in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $33,000 to be transferred from Free Cash to be transferred to injured-on-duty fire medical expense, $33,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Cover remaining fire injured-on-duty medical expenses from FY23 billing incurred after fiscal year closing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $33,000 for the fiscal year 2023 for injured and duty medical expenses. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Motion pauses. Counselor Peak.
Okay, so this next one is a $312,479 appropriation for various items related to the police department, and I think we have someone from the department. And I think we have someone from the department here who can explain it in a bit more detail. But basically, with retirements and resignations and general attrition, there was some payout of benefits, but there was also people who had to be hired. And when they were hired, they had to be, you know, medically screened, they had to be trained, they had to get equipment, and then they had to go to the academy. And while they're in the academy, they can't be working a shift. So we had to do, there had to be overtime expenses to cover those, to cover those shifts while those people were in academy. And it all just, so across these various line items, it added up to the $312,000 that we see here. So if there's any...
Cindy and Officer Alexander?
Good evening, everyone. So the request for...
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry about that. My name is Eric Alexander. I'm a lieutenant with the police department.
Thank you.
So the request in the amount of $312,479.75 is to cover costs for expenses for the following. The first is unforeseen contractual payouts due to the attrition of four different officers, a captain and three officers. Comp time, vacation time, and sick time expenses for $59,944.45. The second is police contractual increases and wage alignment, or realignment, I should say. That's for eight supervisors from August of last year to June of this year, and that is in the amount of $125,009.34. The third is overtime spent, expenses, and that is unanticipated overtime expenses due to the attrition of those four officers. The delays in hiring of four replacement officers, the filling of beats for two officers attending the police academy, one officer on light duty, and minimal special officers available to work due to the police reform bill and post requirements. And that is in the amount of $109,250. And finally, the fourth is, as Councilor Peak had mentioned, police academy tuition, uniforms, equipment, medical, and psychological exams, and those costs for five new full-time officers, and that total is $18,275.96.
Thank you. Any councilor have any questions or comments? I do have one. If you don't know the answer, Cindy probably will know.
All right.
First, thank you for representing the police department here. I know the police chief is in training, I'm pretty sure, right?
Yes.
Do we know why we have two appropriations for incentive? Is that because it wasn't completely funded by the last fiscal year? We have two lines that have police education incentive. It's $22,000, and the other one is the EMT incentive. Usually, that is part of the budget, and at least the budget run out of money, because we didn't fund it completely. Is maybe that's the reason?
I think that would be a question for Cindy, you have?
Education incentive?
Yes.
I believe that is part of the wage realignment for the supervisors increase. Had to factor the additional increase into that as well.
Okay. That makes sense. Any other councilors? Anyone from the public have any comments or questions? Danielle?
Hi, I'm Danielle O'Vanion. I think I have a bad connection. I would love to hear more details, more specifics about the wage realignment. Sorry, I live in Precinct 3, I apologize. Could you please give us more specifics about like wage realignment with what, and in comparison to what? And I wonder if those numbers can be made available to the public? Thank you.
Councilor Peak?
Sure, if I'm not mistaken, the, at least some of the police officers entered into a new union contract this year. So I think when we're talking about realignment, what we mean is the realignment with their salaries with what they should be under this new union contract.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Councilor Peak.
Okay, request is hereby made for approval, this is in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: $312,479.75 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to police base pay, $96,008.91. Police overtime: $109,250. Police education incentive: $22,381.19. Police EMT incentive: $6,324.93. Police holiday pay: $4,727.63. Police sick leave: $36,292.41. Police unused vacation: $19,218.72. Police medical expense: $2,467. Police uniform expense: $9,408.96. Police education and training: $6,400. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. To cover the cost of the contractual payouts for the retirement of Captain William Kelly and the resignation of three officers. To cover the cost of the sergeant's wage, wage increase slash new contract effective 8/18/23. To cover a shortfall in FY '24 overtime as a result of two officers in the police academy, the attrition of four officers, and minimal special officers available due to post and the wage increase of the new sergeant's contract. And to cover the cost of tuition, medical exams, and uniforms slash gear for two new hires that are attending the police academy, and the cost of the medical exams and uniforms slash gear for an additional three new hires.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $312,479.75 for the police personnel services and expenses. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
J P Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
J T Terrell?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak.
Okay, so this one is two, it's a, it's an appropriation for two items related to the IT department. So the first thing is $28,003.45 for two cybersecurity monitoring and protection systems and fire department software conversion. These were unanticipated costs. And then the, I think our IT director is here who can give a little bit of the narrative around it. But then the other one is $7,995 for a replacement of a copier for City Hall. The issue there is that there was a piece that broke, and there was gonna be a very, very long time to get a replacement part for it. So they purchased a new one, and then once that replacement part did come, they repaired the old printer and moved it down to the assessor's office, since they used the old one, or they used the printer a lot anyway. So now we have two functioning printers, but we otherwise would have been without a printer for a very long time, so. And my understanding on the, to jump back to the IT things, the cybersecurity and monitoring systems, these were systems that, at the start of the budget year, the IT department was not aware were options for us. But once they became clear, they were just so, they were, the IT director saw them as so superior that wanted to move on that really quick to minimize the odds of us getting compromised or hacked or anything. And then the fire department software conversion just ended up costing a bit more than they, than they thought. So if there's any questions, Dr. Kama Horton is here, but that's what I got.
Horton, do you wanna add something?
No, that's exactly correct. So the fire department is moving now to a cloud-based interface, moving out of Ambu Pro, and the cost is a little bit higher of what we paid for Ambu Pro. And that was unanticipated, that we moved so quickly, even though it's a positive, that we're moving now to a SIM system where fire and EMS are in the same system. The ambulances can now connect on their computers and respond and have all the data available to them in one place and synchronized with our CAD and our dispatch. There was also some, a little bit of an issue with our Ambu Pro contract, where we needed to keep some records for over a year and extract those records. So we, even though we moved out of that old system, we needed to remain paying two systems, because we need to keep records of that data until we can move them. So that was unanticipated. We didn't anticipate spending around $10,000 for that move, but it happened, even though it's a positive move. For the cybersecurity, we just became aware of that, of this service provided by the Center of Internet Security. That is a program that was funded originally to support election security by the, by the federal government, and now has been extended to support the states and the local and the municipalities, because we know we are targets. And it's happening, and it's happening again and again, that ransoms are being collected. So they're helping us stay up to date, and they're helping us keep that expertise and monitoring. So if you can see here, for $16,000 a year, which is, which is a big amount for, for our IT budget, we now have the ability to control our network 24/7 by experts. We couldn't hire an expert in cybersecurity for that amount of money. And then a little bit more for $2,500, $2,400, we, we IT internally can see with their tools what's happening on our network. So we have more control. So that's the big, the big part of our appropriation request. And the other piece is the replacement for that copier that is so fundamental for us. We copy and stunning, stun and print constantly. And when that machine was down for two weeks with not knowing, because of the, the supply chain collapse that happened, when that piece was going to be available to us, we just needed to move forward and buy a new one. And it's, it's, it's working beautiful. And the old one that actually was going to expire on their, on its lease is now being used by the collectors that print a lot of deals. So it's, it's being reused and it's not being wasted. But it's again, an expense that we didn't anticipate to have.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment about this appropriation? Anyone participating remote? Seeing none, Councilor Peak.
All right, I'll make this in the form, request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: $35,998.45 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to software yearly maintenance, $28,003.45. Equipment: $7,995. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. To cybersecurity, for the cybersecurity and monitoring and protection systems. Investing in an IDS that monitors all network traffic is crucial for security and safeguarding against a substantial financial cost associated with cyber attacks. Fire department software conversion, unanticipated costs. Rationale fire EMS moved to the ESO cloud-based platform, and the implementation process was higher than estimated. They also needed to access slash license, needed access slash license to the old Ambu Pro platform and replacement copier for City Hall. Rationale, the main copier at City Hall required replacement because of a crucial part from UBM that was indefinitely backordered, leaving us without a clear timeline for repair. To ensure office operations remained uninterrupted, we had to proceed with purchasing a new copier.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $35,998.45 for the IT costs, cybersecurity system, software, and replacement copier. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
J P Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
J T Terrell?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak.
Okay, so the next appropriation is $115,000 to purchase two Ford F-150 hybrid trucks for the Parks Department. From the conversations that we had, my understanding is that the current Park Department, is, is here? Okay, cool. Well, Don Mason can elaborate on this if you have any questions, but my understanding is that the, the two, the two Parks Department trucks were in very bad shape, and were very, very old and very inefficient. And so the purchase of two new ones is probably necessary on a number of levels, and that these should, given the level of use that they get, these should hopefully last for a very long time.
Mr. Mason, do you want to add something?
Sure, yeah, the, one of these will go towards the cemetery foreman. His vehicle was taken off the road by motor repair. When it becomes to a safety issue, they weren't working on it any longer, and, and they pulled it off the road. So our foreman has been without a vehicle for about five months now. The second one will replace another one that is coming off the road as well, that is suffering dearly. We are aligning with the city's focus on looking at hybrids. So the F-150 hybrids fit with the city's model that we're moving forward with, and these will definitely go to good use. We, we, we get a lot of life out of our vehicles, and, you know, the cemetery one was actually DPW hand-me-down. So to see a new vehicle, and a couple of new vehicles in the fleet will go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Any councilor have any comments or questions? Councilor Zaret?
Just a question, both for clarification of, of the items as well as for the public. We do have, as the director had stated, the city, in terms of their general direction, but also via ordinance, has a directive to obtain the most fuel-efficient vehicle available commercially for the city on requests, with exceptions or exemptions depending on, again, availability, or if a certain higher fuel-efficient vehicle doesn't meet the needs of our demands of the request. So in this specific case, there's the Ford F-150 Lightning. And I, it's just important probably that the public understand why that wasn't requested and why the hybrid was requested instead. So that's, I guess, a question either to the, the finance chair or to the director.
Mr. Mason, do you wanna answer that?
Yeah, we were looking at availability. Like I said, we've been five, six months without vehicles. So we actually have, one of these hybrids is already in Holyoke, and the other one's in transit. I've been staying in contact with Mark Hoppford throughout the process, and they've been very patient with us to get these vehicles landed for us.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment about this appropriation? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Delphine Thuen, 133 Ferry Street, East Hampton.
Delphine Thuen, 133 Ferry Street, East Hampton. My concern about hybrid trucks is the safety. And are these things that have ever had any fires? Then I also would like to know what the replacement costs of the batteries for them are. And also what kind of a, I know, as you said, what kind of a truck is on here, but for $55,000 each, that doesn't seem like a, a whole lot of money for the amount that trucks that I'm familiar with are costing.
Mr. Counselor Peak, you want to answer?
I, I can't speak to the safety of the vehicles. I, I'm not an expert on vehicle safety, but yeah, I'm not, I don't know that I have an answer. Maybe John.
Mr. Mason, do you want to answer?
Yeah, these aren't, these aren't plug-in hybrids. These are gas-powered hybrids, so there's no battery replacement cost on that. So safety is not really a concern. And for municipalities, we receive, these are a discount. We receive state pricing. So the average person off the street is not going to get the same deal municipality does based on state contracts that municipalities work up with the state and, and local businesses.
Thank you.
That answers my question.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Counselor Peak.
All right, I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $115,000. To be transferred from Capital Stabilization, $115,000. To be transferred to, purchase of two Ford F-150 hybrid trucks. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Purchase two Ford F-150 hybrid trucks. These vehicles will replace vehicles that have already been removed from the road for safety reasons.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $115,000 to purchase two Ford F-150 hybrid trucks. Any further discussion? Counselor Denham.
Just, just a point. I just, I appreciate the efforts that Director Mason put into making sure that public employees aren't using their own personal vehicles for city work. So I just want to acknowledge that as a concern for why I am supporting this, but also appreciate the fact that we're trying to meet guidelines around the city's fuel efficiency, but that is a, a big concern that I think that we should be thinking about, city employees not using their personal vehicles for city work. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor? Bar, Counselor Sarit.
Oh, I was just going to say as a follow-up to my question earlier, Mr. President, I think one of the, one of the reasons that this makes sense, just for the public again, the, the electric trucks are probably a year out on order, so there wouldn't be one readily available. So that would be my inference as to why this makes more of a, more sense. So good to vote yes.
Thank you. Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes, Counselor Peak.
All right, our next appropriation is a $45,000 appropriation from free cash to city Medicare. It's to cover the city's share of the, or the, cover the Medicare matching share from the city to the IRS. I think our treasurer Jessica Ebert's here if there's any, any questions about that. I think it was just a little estimate thing.
Hi, Jessica Ebert, city treasurer. Last year, when the budget was done, the Medicare was based on the pay plan at the time. The pay plan was reevaluated during the budget time, so it was all short this year.
Any counselor have any questions, comments? No? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment about this appropriation? Anyone remote? Seeing none, Counselor Peak, thank you.
All right, I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $45,000. To be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to city Medicare, $45,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will be used to cover the Medicare matching share paid to the city or paid by the city to the IRS for employees for the rest of the fiscal year. There will not be enough in the budget to currently cover it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for supplemental appropriation for $45,000 for the fiscal year 2024 city Medicare cost. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye, motion passes, Counselor Peak.
Thank you then. Our next appropriation is a $7,000 appropriation, also from free cash, to city payroll processing and school payroll processing. I think this is a, a pretty similar situation, but Jessica, if you'd like to expand on that at all, feel free.
Yeah, kind of the same thing as the Medicare. It was during the budget time that it was planned for, and then the Harper's payroll services fees went up on July 1st.
Thank you. Any counselor have any questions or comments? Seeing none, anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this supplemental appropriation? Anyone remote? Seeing none, Counselor Peak.
I'll make this in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $7,000. To be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to city payroll processing, $4,000. School payroll processing, $3,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will be used to cover the cost of payroll processing for the city for the rest of the fiscal year. There will not be enough in the budget currently to cover it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $7,000 for the fiscal year 2024 city payroll processing cost. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
I think she's.
She dropped.
She left.
Yep.
Okay. JT Terrell.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Motion passes, Counselor Peak.
Our next appropriation is a $17,000 appropriation from free cash to school liability to cover some unanticipated remaining school liability premium expenses for the fiscal year. My understanding, Emily Russo, our research director, might want to speak to this in more detail, but my understanding is that it's effectively estimated every year and it maybe sometimes comes in a little high or low and.
Emily?
Yeah, so again, Emily Russo, human resources director. So every year we can kind of guesstimate what our premium is going to be. And last year we had the new school added mid-year to our insurance liability because prior to it being completed, it was under the instruction or the construction company. So once we took that liability on, it was hard to calculate for this fiscal year what the expense was going to be. So we fell a little bit short in our calculations.
Thank you. Any counselor have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I, I have one, but it's not about why we're doing this. My question is going to be how much we have in free cash after all these appropriations? If anyone knows? The balance, yeah. Hedo?
Hedo Patel, city auditor. After all these appropriations, we will have $2,084,690.80.
Thank you, Hedo.
Most welcome.
Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this appropriation? Anyone participating remote? Seeing none, Counselor Peak.
I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $17,000. To be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to school liability. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Cover unanticipated remaining school liability premium expense for the fiscal, for fiscal year 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $17,000 for the fiscal year 2024 school liability premium expenses. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Tom is gone. Tom is not here.
Yep. He's not here, thank you. Into the habit of, the work of.
I know, thank you, Counselor, but just, motion passes, Counselor Peak.
Okay, so this next appropriation is one that we have been doing for a while now. It's $600,000 to the tax rate stabilization fund. So basically the idea here is that we're taking some free cash and using it to pay down, you know, the, the, to, to help cover money that otherwise would have had to be raised by taxpayers to help pay for the new school. So it means that everyone's tax bills goes down just a little bit. I mean, you spread $600,000 across all the tax parcels in the city. It's, it's not huge, but it helps a little bit and it's something that the mayor's been doing for some time and is continuing to do here.
Anyone from the city before counselors have something else to add? Hedo, you don't want to add anything? I guess not.
Nope, I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Any counselor have any questions or comments? Counselor Sarit.
Do we know roughly how, how much this might impact individual tax bills? And also, how did we arrive at this number? Was it somewhat formulaic or was it, well, we have X amount of money available, so we can just put this into tax stabilization? Like, how did we arrive at, at the $600,000 figure?
Right. Well, I don't want to speak for the mayor. My, my guess is that it's something where you're sort of working backwards, saying, here's the free cash we have and then here's the free cash needs. But I think that this is approximately, it's been something, this is about the order of magnitude that I believe it's been for the last few years. So, well, Hedo might correct me there.
You're done?
Well, and then in, in terms of the, I, I, it would be tough to figure out what it would mean for the average taxpayer. I mean, I think the one thing about it is that the way it's set up, like, I think if you have a very large tax bill, you probably are going to benefit a bit more from this than if you have a very small tax bill. So I'm figuring out what you mean even by the average taxpayer is probably a little bit tricky, but yeah.
Well, if you were using.
Yeah, if, by Counselor Kozinski's calculations, it's probably about $75.
Counselor, just one second. Hedo, I'm sorry.
Yes. Hedo Patel, city auditor. When free cash got certified, I, I sat with mayor to discuss what to put into the stabilization account. It's, I also sat with her and the internal finance team to determine during the budget season, what would be the best support we can do big picture financially. That's where these numbers are brainstormed and discussed, and that's what we put forward on the budget and into this account.
Thank you. Counselor Riley?
Yeah, so I guess the question that I have, because I, I do remember this every time we've done supplemental appropriations, I, I've seen a similar dollar amount. So I guess my question, maybe if you can answer it, Counselor Peak, if not for the auditor, is if we were to continue on this trend of continuing to put money towards this, do we have any idea on how, how much time we save on the backend? Like, does that question make sense?
I, I can try. I, I don't know that it saves us any time in, because I, I think that what it's doing is that the amount that we would be paying goes down, like, the amount that we would be paying that year goes down, but the amount of years that we will be paying is
Okay.
the same rather than that we're sort of paying it down faster in service of the people of future, which is another way that it could be done. But that, my understanding is that what we are doing is we're reducing the amount due this year, so it doesn't reflect, affect timeline.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hedo?
Just want to add to this. This tax rate stabilization account is for debt exclusion, which we took on, the debt which was taken on middle school or K-28 school. And every year it varies because free cash is one-time money, and that's why it varies year to year. We can be putting this much amount this year, but that not, that might not be the case next year. It all goes with what comes out as a final free cash number.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Seeing none, anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this appropriation? Anyone participating remote have any questions or comments? Seeing none, Counselor Peak.
All right, I'll make this in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $600,000. To be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to tax rate stabilization. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. To fund the tax rate stabilization, to help reduce the impact of debt exclusions on the tax rate.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $600,000 for the tax rate stabilization funds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes, Counselor Peak.
One more. So the final appropriation is $15,000 to be transferred from free cash to legal. I think those of you who, who have been with me on the council for a few years know, this used to be a much more common thing. You know, legal bills are obviously very difficult to anticipate. You don't often know going into a legal situation even what something's going to cost, let alone how many legal situations you might end up in, in a given year. So it's difficult. When we had the finance meeting, the mayor did talk a bit, and I know that she's reported this here as well, that there are some best practices that, that they've been implementing around working legal costs, say, into grants so that, so that they can, they can do like, cover some of that there and not spend this down quite as quickly. So I do think, I, I did credit the mayor at the time for the fact that it's been a while since we've seen one of these and it used to be every, like, when, when I started and when a couple of my colleagues started, it felt like it was every few months there was, oh, the, we, we're out of legal money again. So sort of like you were crediting the, the fire department for that. Like, I do think that there's been some, some progress there that's worth noting, but with the various things, especially I think around, around Union Street and all the sort of legal costs associated with, with that and other big projects, we are, we're going to need $15,000, I guess, to make the legal budget whole for the rest of the fiscal year.
Any counselor have any questions or comments? Seeing none, anyone from the public have any questions or comment about this appropriation? Anyone remote? Seeing none, Counselor Peak.
All right, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $15,000. To be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to legal. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Legal costs billed for FY '24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, for the supplemental appropriation of $15,000 for the fiscal year 2024 legal cost. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes, Counselor Sarit.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a supplemental appropriation request for $100,000 from Capital Stabilization to go to the Parsons Ferry project. This request is to cover legal cost surveys and potential land taking if in the project that would ultimately result in a number of infrastructure improvements, moving and retaining wall, improving sidewalks and adding crosswalks. This item is actually part of some items that are going to come after the public hearing. The city is, is intending to apply for a grant from the new housing works program, which would bring approximately $5 million of infrastructure improvements to the city. We have this appropriation request. We have some easement requests coming up and we have a letter of support that will also be coming up. The housing works grant will cover. The Housing Works grant will cover a number of things: sewer lines, parking, retaining walls. I mentioned there will be a bike path connecting Ferry Street to the Manhand Rail Trail, as well as being able to address this troublesome intersection, which abuts the Ferry Street property. There's been a lot of conversations about this recently from residents, and this portion of the project probably costs around $1.5 million, give or take. The grant itself does not cover certain costs, and those being certain legal fees, surveillance, surveying costs, appraisals of land, because ultimately, in order to move that retaining wall, we would need to take land by eminent domain. And so, these funds are obviously important for the roles that they'll serve, but they're also critical to the grant themselves, because in order to apply for the grant, we have to demonstrate that we have the funds available to do certain things that the grant would allow us to do, which such as taking land specifically. Additionally, it obviously also demonstrates a commitment to the project overall. These are conservative estimates. If we don't use any of this money, it goes back to the city. If we need to use more, which it sounds like that's not necessarily would be the case, we'd have to request additional appropriations. I'll also add here as a footnote that this is not an approval by the city council to take land by eminent domain. That would have to come later on in the project. As noted, this is coming from the capital stabilization account. We had one other item in the public hearings tonight, that was the park trucks that we approved for $115,000 from capital stabilization. That being approved, and if this $100,000 is approved, that would leave us with $3,659,965 and 56 cents in that, in that account, so there's, there's plenty of money there. Mr. Jeff Bag, who's a consultant, I believe, is that you, is that you, Mr. Bag? I've only met him a couple times. He's a consultant hired by the city on this project. He was very helpful at the committee level to inform us, along with Director Nudelman and Mike Michon, who's in charge of the ferry development, to inform us about this. So I would, I would recommend that he be allowed to, to give some input. The property committee approved this 3-0 to recommend to the full council. That's all for now, Mr. President.
Mr. Nudelman, do you want to add something?
Excellent explanation, Counselor Sarret. Appreciate that.
Just a little bit, can you introduce yourself? Thank you.
Yep, Greg Nudelman, Director of Public Works. Counselor Sarret did a great job explaining kind of the ins and outs of this whole effort here, and we really have a great opportunity to work with a private developer on Ferry Street to put a real strong grant application together, and hopefully address the issue with the line of sight coming from Parsons on the ferry. We've been working on that since, I think, we, about the fall of 2020, and it's been, it's been a problem, you know, years prior. So this funding being made available just, just helps make our grant application look that much stronger, so appreciate the council helping us move this forward.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
Delphine Thun again, 133 Ferry Street. And I have multiple concerns about this $100,000. And is it a done deal? That's my first question.
Make all the questions, and then we're going to answer all of them.
Okay, so. I'm concerned about taking land. I'm concerned about the process. This is the, I, I keep up pretty much on what's going on in town, but this is the first time that I ever saw in print that there was going to be something to do with Parsons and Ferry Street. And when did this project start? Who was involved? Was the, the general public invited to be part of this? I'm very, very concerned. We have the bike path currently going behind our house. That works out really nice. Where is this going to go? From where to where? There's all, there's several different accesses to the current bike path, and I'm not clear on where it's going from. And can you, I can't even imagine the traffic that is going to be, the congestion, if you're going to add additional ways for bicycles and walkers to go and take away from the width of the current street, which is very narrow to begin with.
That's it?
And that's the, that's what I want to know.
Thank you. Counselor Sarret?
So I'll answer as best I can within the confines of the.
Well, we have Mr. Nudelman here too, if he want to add something else.
Oh.
Go ahead first.
I mean, what I could say within the confines of what we're here to approve is that we're not approving a project per se, we're approving funds to do things such as evaluate the project, surveying fees, legal fees, and have money available if we, if we are able to go ahead with a project that involves eminent domain and taking a property. That's, again, to be able to qualify and show good faith to apply for this grant. In terms of the infrastructure, the DPW director would probably be best to, to answer that. I could give it a, a good shot, but I think he's here, so I'll lean on him. And in terms of the bike path connector, that will be discussed in a future item regarding the easements. What I will say is that, that just bisects the Ferry Street development, yeah, for between Ferry Street and the bike path, and doesn't really affect anything else. But other than that, Mr. President, I would recommend that the, the DPW director's here who can give a much better informed answer than I can, other than that.
Mr. Nudelman?
Yep, Greg Nudelman again, Director of Public Works. So the main concern, the main problem, I guess, I would say, with the intersection at Parsons and Ferry is that the retaining wall is obstructs line of sight looking down Ferry Street as you're coming off of Parsons. So what, what we'll be evaluating with this funding, and if we are able to get, be successful in our mass works grant, or housing works grant, I'm sorry, would be relocating that wall, moving it back approximately eight feet, making it taller to achieve the proper line of sight that's necessary to enter Ferry Street from Parsons. So it really takes care of a, it really, it will eliminate a lot of, a lot of people's concerns about how hard it is to see oncoming traffic when you come off of Parsons on the ferry. Furthermore, it'll actually allow for the road to be wider, wider sidewalk. I believe we have a raised crosswalk in the plans in RFB at the intersection of Parsons and Ferry, and improvements all the way down to about Emerald Place. So we're not necessarily, you know, the improvements we're going to make aren't going to really increase traffic, or really, they're just going to make traffic move through the area on a better, a better than it is now. So the private development occurring there on the opposite side of Ferry Street just creates an excellent opportunity for us to build a strong grant application. And if you have further questions, feel free to reach out to the DPW office tomorrow. I'd be happy to show you, show you a little bit more about what we're, what we're doing, but that's basically the, the gist of it.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else from the public?
So the DPW has a preliminary map?
I would concord with Mr. Nudelman. If you have more questions, you should contact DPW office tomorrow.
Okay.
Or as soon as possible.
But if I could just, Omar, if you don't mind if I, if I add, we have been working on this since 2020 in conjunction with the planning department. It was, improvements at that intersection were discussed multiple times at Board of Public Works meetings over the past few years.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I'd like to know, the Board of Public Works is there, are there meetings published?
We are discussing something that is not related to their meeting, so I would recommend you to go to their webpage or call to the city hall tomorrow, and you will get all the info about, about those meetings.
Okay. From my understanding, there's.
Do you have any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Because it's supposed to be three minutes, and I told you to make all the questions before, so that way we can answer all of them. I will allow you to make another question.
I would like to make another, a statement.
Make a statement.
From my understanding, there has been markings placed on Ferry Street that are indicating different alternatives to this bike path, or whatever you want to call it, for this project. Are there, have, has there been any preliminaries done towards this, even though you are asking for money now?
Greg?
Yep. So we entered into a contract with VHB, our traffic consulting firm, back in 2020, and looked at multiple different avenues to resolve the line of sight issue at, at Parsons and Ferry. I'm not 100% sure what you're referring to as a bike path. This, that there will be, you know, wider sidewalk, but not, no extension of the rail trail or anything like that associated with this, with this grant application that will happen in the public, in the public way. So I, like I said, if you, feel free to call the DPW tomorrow, and I'd be happy to show you, or talk to you a little bit more about what our efforts have included over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else?
That answers some of my questions.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Counselor Sarret?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to make a, a motion to appropriate the sum of $100,000 in capital stabilization to the Parsons and Ferry intersection process, $100,000, to make traffic and pedestrian safety improvements on Ferry Street between the intersections with Parsons Street and Emerald Place. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to assist with legal costs, survey work, and eminent domain takings.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $100,000 for the Parsons and Ferry Street traffic and pedestrian improvements. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention? Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstention? Motion passes. Because we have some items related to this in property, I will take the property committee report right now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, at the same meeting for the item that we discussed above, there were two other items that I'd like to bring to the council's attention now for votes. The first is an amendment to the existing reciprocal easements. The parcel noted as number eight, easement area eight, is, the public may or may not know, but I'll explain now, we approved a number of easements, reciprocal easements, to the Ferry Street parcel back in 2019. That was for the purpose of establishing public access and city access for a variety of reasons, parking, we had mentioned the bike path extension, other public amenities. In the meantime, the proposal for the building on that parcel has slightly changed, and the building, the proposed building is actually planned as being requested to be moved easterly. Subsequently, we need to now go back and further delineate all of the potential reciprocal easements that would be utilized on, in that specific area, again, best known as easement number eight. Additionally, this ties back into the Housing Works grant that we're discussing. In order to apply for that and to ask for money for certain public amenities, again, such as parking, bike racks, pedestrian access, et cetera, it needs to be clear in the application what are considered public areas and what are considered private areas. So we met the easement area in question, both old and new, again, were available to Hackett, we discussed that. Our consultant, Jeff Bag, was there to explain that, and we, after review, we voted 3-0 to recommend to the full council. Again, Mr. Bag is here, if you'd like to ask him any questions, Mr. President.
Any Counselor have any questions? Seeing none, Counselor Sarret?
Okay, I will make a motion. I move that the city council amend the existing agreement and perpetual grant of easement dated April 1st, 2021, by and between the City of East Hampton and One Industrial Loss LLC by deleting the description of easement area eight and replacing it with a new easement area eight, as shown in the First Amendment to Agreement and Perpetual Grant of Easement, which was reviewed and approved by the city solicitor and the city council property committee and presented to the city council at its May 1st, 2024 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the easement of 1130 Street project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Sarret?
And finally, Mr. President, in, in association with the, the, the items that we just discussed relative to this development and the application for the Housing Works grant, there is a letter of support that was drafted to, to be recommended from the city council. That was sent out earlier this week. Basically, it summarizes the scope of the proposed project, which includes 90 affordable units, upgrades to pedestrian vehicle safety adjacent to and within the complex itself, summarizes previous financial outlays and grants made available. We made a very small amendment in committee, which basically just better reflects the potential 90 units in context of what the city had done with affordable housing prior. And the letter that was emailed to the committee, to the council, which I'm happy to read into record if you'd like me to, Mr. President, was approved by the property committee 3-0.
Please do read it for the benefit of the public.
Would you like me to make this in the form of a motion?
Please do.
In the form of a motion, I would ask the city council accept the following letter of support. The East Hampton City Council strongly supports the request for the city's 2024 Housing Work Grant, which will support the creation of 90 affordable units and upgrade pedestrian safety, pedestrian vehicle safety immediately adjacent to the project. The redevelopment of One Ferry Street is a transformational project for the city, and this funding will enable the completion of a multi-year public-private partnership to revitalize a seven-acre abandoned mill complex into a vibrant area with market rate and affordable housing. The city council has demonstrated a strong commitment to this project. 2018, supported the application and award of $3.9 million from Mass Works or Interstructure to support the initial renovation of Building 3 and Building 5, as well as the construction of a new roundabout promenade along Lower Mill Pond of pedestrian safety improvements. In 2020, appropriation of $46,000 for cannabis stabilization to begin designing a solution to the dangerous intersection at Parsons and Ferry Street. 2020, approval of a 121A agreement with the project developer to provide tax stability for the large and complex project. 2024, appropriation of $100,000 from the Community Preservation Act in support of site preparation work, along with the CPA committee's commitment to a further, to fund another $400,000 from CPA over the next two fiscal years to support the development team's application for affordable housing credits. And 2024, appropriation of $100,000 for legal fees and associated eminent domain takings necessary to fix the problem intersection at Parsons and Ferry Street. In addition, the city council has supported other efforts in the surrounding neighborhood, including the recent award of $1.1 million from CDVG to design significant infrastructure upgrades in the adjacent city, New City neighborhood, a $175,000 grant from Mass Development to design enhanced pedestrian and vehicle, vehicle safety improvements to the adjacent thriving Pleasant Street Mills, and a $304,000, $500,000, $304,500 MVP grant for slope restoration, green infrastructure, streetscape, and pedestrian safety improvements on Emerald Place. This Housing Works funding will result in the creation of 96 new units in East Hampton, 90 of which will be affordable, and will improve a long-identified dangerous section of Parsons and Ferry Streets. These units will be the first large-scale addition of new affordable housing units in East Hampton since 2015. We urge the Housing Works program to fund this tremendous shovel-ready project. Together, East Hampton and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities can demonstrate how this funding can be used to create new housing units.
I have a motion and a second to, to approve the letter of support. Any further discussion? Counselor Riley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of all of my neighbors. I live over in this community, right across from St. Bridget Cemetery, and I just know that the neighborhood that I live in and the adjacent streets in New City have, it feels at times that they've been long forgotten by everyone else in the city of East Hampton. So to see this kind of revitalization happening, and while also making our streets safer, is a true testament to taking care of the. is a true testament to taking care of the entire city. So I just wanted to say on behalf of all of the residents that live in that neighborhood, thank you all for agreeing to do this.
Thank you. Any other Consul? Consulor Sarat?
I just wanted to just point out for the public that projects like this and applications like this are the result of an effort of a lot of people working together. I've mentioned a few times, I really want to consult, thank you, thank our consultant, Mr. Bag, who's demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to East Hampton. Prior to and including this project and proposal, we heard from our director of DPW earlier. We have really an amazing public-private partnership with One Industrial Lofts. Mr. Michon has shown incredible commitment to taking what was just a few years ago a pile of rubble and starting to develop the Ferry Street project and now committing to 90 affordable units, I think is exquisite. I just wanted to, I've neglected before, I apologize, Mr. President, but if I may, I just wanted to give a very special thanks to our auditor, Hadal Patel. I've never done appropriation before and I appreciate that she set time aside to sit down, explain to me the process, as well as how the money, how we, where the money comes from and how we make these determinations. And again, thank you to all the people who put their efforts into it. There was a letter from the mayor as well. And, you know, we're doing our part now as the city council to to ask for this very important, close to $5 million of funding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other Consul? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Consulor Sarat?
I don't, we do not have anything else on our agenda, so thus concludes.
Thank you, Consul.
We don't have a meeting scheduled either right now.
Thank you, Consul. Orders, Consulor Denim?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the ordinance committee has continued to have good conversation around the municipal opt-in specialized code. We had city employees, as well as representatives from the DOR at our last meeting, as well as a builder for the the school reuse, develop, you know, the reuse, the contractor, I guess, who's going to be doing that work, had a good conversation about impact. It seems as though there is limited impact on the projects around affordable housing that is in regards to buildings that already exist. So those structures that already exist, so there'll be limited impact on that. There will be some impact on new buildings, but that continues to be kind of the underlying question of what we're trying to understand in terms of cost impact. But there are a variety of different ways that the Main Street project can reach passive house, which is what they're interested in, whether it's all electric or whether it is a mixed energy, mixed fuel use or mixed fuel design. So we're going to have yet another conversation. We are trying to speak, reach other builders to discuss general impact so we can really try to have an understand, understanding of actual cost impact of that. I think the biggest, it seems to be, the biggest impact may be on private development. And so that's, we're just trying to understand that before we make any decision on around adoption of of the specialized code. The other thing that we have discussed and we went over was the purchase of fuel-efficient vehicles municipal, for municipal use. We had, again, a good conversation. We made one, working with our conservation agent, we made an amendment to the vehicle procurement prioritization. We expanded, currently, the first one is battery electric vehicle. And we expanded that to include zero emission vehicles so that that could take into consideration any new technology that may impact that, including hydrogen-powered vehicles. So there is that amendment that has been made. We voted three to zero to adopt it. And I will need to make a public hearing. So I move that we have a public hearing for June 20 to be able to review the ordinance change.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to the ordinance change for a public hearing June 20, 6:15 in these chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
Great, and we are still working on the temporary moratorium. Chair Kuzinski and I still need to connect on that. We are still trying outreach to local farmers to see the impact that that's going to have on them. So that's just, that's just that particular process of trying to kind of do our due diligence to outreach to folks. And then our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, May 21, Room One at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
And that's everything that our committee has to offer counsel today.
Thank you. I would take a one-minute recess. Okay. Because I have ADHD and I cannot concentrate. So I need, I need one minute break.
Sorry.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. We're going to continue with the committee reports. We have rules, Consulor Kuzinski.
Mr. President, the rules committee just wanted to report that we will be meeting tomorrow night, Thursday, at 6:30 in Room One to discuss ranked choice voting.
Secure in B. Secure in B.
Oh, I apologize. It is Room B, thank you. Barbara, so glad you're here. Ranked choice voting to, I think we're pretty much ready to, I think, move on that and get that, we'll be making decisions rather than to send back to the attorney the information for final approval. This concludes.
Thank you. And the agenda is a Room B, but our clerk is gonna, gonna find out if that room is gonna be available.
Yeah, CPA who had Room One may not be meeting, so.
It may not be, so we'd have, if so, we would, Mr. President, we would prefer to be in Room One.
Okay.
And therefore would post a note.
Put a note on the door.
For anyone who didn't get the word.
Yep. Does conclude.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Consulor Kuzinski. No business, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first one, I'm going to pass over to Consulor Peak, which is a request for immediate action to establish an opioid settlement account.
Okay. Yeah, just as a aside, there was a really interesting special about opioid settlement account funds on last week tonight, just like a couple days ago, so, anyway. So I move pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, Clause 4, for approval to hereby given to establish an account for the purpose of receiving funds designated for the opioid settlement.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to establish an opioid settlement account. Any further discussion? Consulor Riley?
Just one question for clarification. So does this, does this create the framework for us to receive funding should money come? Or has it already been established that there are people within East Hampton that are entitled to compensation for this?
I can, the, the city of East Hampton is entitled to compensation as part of the massive settlements that are going to be coming in over the next, I believe, 18 years.
Okay.
And so this is just a place for those to go.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Consulor Derby?
I would just say it's similar to the tobacco settlements that happened in the 90s.
Any other Consul? Those one in favor?
Well, you have to ask if anyone objects to me.
Consulor Kuzinski?
Just a question, that those funds, in order to come out of the opioid settlement account, have to go through city council, is that correct?
What was the question?
Do they have to go through city council?
Go through city council for, for release of those funds? Or are they spent by the various departments or the mayor without council further approval?
Do you know the answer?
I, I believe that the answer, Hadal knows, I just believe, but I believe they do, I believe that they would need to go to council, but.
Eagle Patel, City Auditor. We have been receiving opioid funds. I think it's since last year we've been receiving it. DOR just came out with a bulletin, which is 2023-7, which gives the regulation that an, and city or town can establish a special revolving account which does not further need any council vote or appropriation to be approved before spending. There is a stricter regulation where we have to submit the reports to the state and we all, the city has a portal to submit that. So this won't need further appropriation request to, to go through the city council once we establish this account. Right now, what's happening with this, these funds, it's going to the free cash, so it's going to general fund. Once we establish, I would get a authority to redirect these funds directly into this revolving account.
Consulor Kuzinski?
President, this is the one time we vote on this and it won't be coming back to us in the future. I would further request a follow-up of how much money do we anticipate to be in this account, both this year and over time? Are we talking $5,000? Are we talking 150, $300,000 or more? Is there a projection over the 18 years?
Um, I do not have this information, but City Treasurer Jessica Hebert is keeping track of it. So I would say she would be the right person to ask this question. But I don't have that information. I can tell you what we collected last year or so far.
Before that, Hadal, I, in our package, we, if we approve this account tonight, we already have one of the appropriation is going to be take that money, it's going to be $59,520.71. That we will be moving to that account if we approve to establish this account. Hadal?
Yes, so 2023, that's what we collected. We collected $59,520.71. Because it closed to free cash and once we establish this account, I would be able to move this money into that account. 2024, as of, I would say, as of April, we have collected $156,134.11, which, once this account is established, I would be able to move from general fund revenue to the special revenue without further appropriation.
Consulor Peak, and then I'm going to you.
Yeah, sure. So I don't want to be a jerk here, but I'm going to have to, I think, with this being an item for immediate consideration, it's for immediate consideration if none of us object. And I am going to have to, I send, I want to send this to finance.
You want to send it to finance?
Yeah, but I, I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time. And the reason for this, as much as I really appreciate all the hard work that the city puts into it, these funds, like I said, I was just watching something about this like two nights ago, these funds nationwide have been misused in a lot of places. They've been spent in ways that they shouldn't be spent. And if we're not going to get another look at how these funds are being used before they are spent, if there's no further appropriation coming from, if this doesn't, isn't subject to, say, interdepartmental transfer, then I need a better understanding of how, I mean, basically what I need is, I need an ironclad assurance that these funds are going to be going to the people who have been harmed by the port, by the horrible, horrible criminal behavior of these companies before and not going to, for instance, infrastructure or law enforcement or anything like that, which are all worthy things that deserve money. But these funds are to specifically help the people who were harmed by this. And I, I need to see, just, I feel like I'd be remiss in my duties as finance chair if I approved a revolving fund that the city council will, will not have any oversight over without having an understanding of the plan for how those funds are going to go to help the people who have been harmed. That's just where I am and I'm, I'm.
Withdraw the motion.
So I will withdraw my motion.
Who made the second?
I did, I withdraw my second.
Well, withdraw the second.
I have a question that I would like.
Mr. Kuzinski?
I would like to suggest that someone, perhaps Hadal, investigate a couple of things, and that is the possibility of language that we would put into the approval, which would restrict the funds in some way such that they would come back to the council for our approval before release. It may be the standard practice, but do we have the authority to make that type of revolving account? So I would ask that that be researched and reported back to us.
I would, so I will take a motion to move it to a committee.
So moves. Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to move to establish an opioid settlement account to the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some appointments to send to the Appointment Subcommittee. We have a city council presidential appointment for Stephen de Salles to Licensing Board with an expiration of June 3, 2030. I move that that be sent to the Appointment Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to move Stephen to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
We also have three mayoral appointments. Carol Smith to Cherry Funds Committee, 1231, 2026. Paul Davis National Pond Committee, 1231, 2024. And Chelsea Blazer to Affordable Fair Housing, 1231, 2026. I move that those be sent to the Appointment Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to move those three appointments to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Just for the record, we are now moving one of the appointments requested by the mayor. I'm pretty sure the mayor is going to withdraw that appointment as soon as possible. That's the reason we are now moving it to the Appointments Committee. Mr. Vice President?
So we have a couple motions related to the Public Library to support a state building grant application. And so, oh.
Before, Consulor Derby, read the motions for, for, to support the library. Because again, I'm asking to the Consul for immediate consideration. I want to ask before we go to the discussion if anyone is against it. Seeing none, now, Mr. Vice President?
So I have two motions here. And so the first one is I move to give permission to the East Hampton Public Library to apply for, accept, and expend state grant funds. And the City of East Hampton strongly supports East Hampton Public Library's application to the 2023-24 MBLC construction grant round. We believe that new library building will provide a valuable benefit to our community and city leadership intends to be a strong partner to the Public Library Association of East Hampton through every step of the anticipated project. East Hampton is a thriving city and needs a modern, fully accessible library.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to allow the library to apply for those grants. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes, Mr. Vice President?
The second one is I move to appropriate local funding for the planning and design phase. The local funding referred to, a maximum match of $100,000 would be provided by the East Hampton Public Library from fundraising and/or the endowment.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to support the library again. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
And I will turn it over to Consulor Peak for an interdepartmental transfer and a lot of supplemental appropriations.
Let's start with the interdepartmental transfer. Request is hereby made, this is a first reading on all of these. a first reading on all of these. And I'm, can I just do this, to send these all to finances of one big block?
Consular, I would recommend to do that. And the second one is to, in the same motion, to schedule a public hearing.
And schedule, okay. So I'm gonna make a motion for all of these transfers and appropriations to move them to the Finance Committee and to schedule a public hearing for, what's that?
The 20th?
Fifth?
June 5th.
June 5th, yeah. To schedule, okay. So here is, wait, should you say, did you say second?
I don't have the motion yet.
You made a motion.
Yeah, and then I'm gonna read them all. As, in the form of a motion.
Okay. I thought you would read, you were in the process.
That would be, yeah, all right. Okay.
Moving things along.
Here they go. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $20,000 to be transferred from Veterans Cash Benefits, $20,000 to be transferred to VSO Salary, $15,000. Care Sold and Sale, $2,800. Professional and Tactical Services, $500. Education and Training, $100. Membership and Sips and Dews, $600. In-state Travel, $1,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, Veterans Department needs for current fiscal year. The rest of these are supplemental appropriations. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $37,540.67 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to FY21 COVID-19 Vaccine. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to cover grant deficits. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation, amount requested, $60,642.21 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Building Operations. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, Building Operations is absorbed maintenance responsibilities for the three former elementary schools and the former town lodging facility at 75 Oliver Street. We are requesting $60,642.21 to cover expenses associated with the maintenance of these properties for FY2024. The majority of this funding has gone to minimal heating for the former schools in order to keep their fire sprinkler systems active and maintain their current interior condition. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation, amount requested, $287,000 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization Account, to be transferred to FY24 FEMA 21 FPS LED Sign Grant, $12,000. FY24 FEMA 22 AFG Brush Truck Grant, $115,000. FY24 FEMA 22 AFG SCBA Grant, $160,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, costs will cover matching amounts for three federal homeland security grants for capital improvement projects. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $59,520.71 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Revolving Account. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, opioid settlement money. Well, I guess we'll just put that in and once we figure it out, we can deal with it. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $20,240 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to PT Inspection, Part-Time Inspection Gas Plumbing Wire, $2,400. Temporary Positions Regular, $17,840. To be, the amount requested will be used for the following purpose, the budget was changed to $50 per inspection from monthly stipend and budget line was not adjusted to reflect this change. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $200,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Snow Rentals, $50,000. Snow Miscellaneous Services, $15,000. Small Tools, $7,000. Snow Repair, $7,000. School Plowing, $30,000. Snow Chemical, $18,000. Salt, $71,000. Travel and Meals, $2,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, the Department of Public Works has experienced a shortfall of $200,000 in the snow and ice removal budget for FY24. We are requesting funds be transferred from Free Cash to cover this deficit. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $8,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Trash Municipal, $2,000. Trash Schools, $6,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, due to cost increases for trash disposable municipal and school buildings, we have experienced a shortfall in trash disposal budget. In the trash disposal budget, we are requesting $8,000 to fund these expenses for the remainder of FY2024. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, to be, the amount requested, $29,188.05 to be transferred from, it doesn't actually say, I think it's Free Cash.
I mean, we have the account number.
Yeah, we have the, okay, I'm just gonna read the account number. 001.1451.5840.2023, $29,188.05 to be transferred to FY23 Public Safety Site Improvements, amount requested will be used for the following purpose, redemect remaining funds for other safety complex IT needs. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $23,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Streetlight. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, reallocated solar credits that have led to a deficit in the city Streetlight Account. We are requesting $23,000 to be transferred to cover these expenses for the remainder of FY2024. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation, amount requested, $147,000 to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, to be transferred to Water. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, energy/electricity prices have increased in FY2024 and solar credits are no longer being applied to certain city electricity accounts. As such, we are requesting $147,000 to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings to cover this shortfall. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $12,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Building Operations. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, unexpected HVAC system repairs were encountered in, at City Hall and the public safety complex in FY24. We are requesting $12,000 to fund these expenses. Request is hereby made for the approval of, excuse me, one second. The following appropriation, amount requested, $364,000 to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, $364,000, to be transferred to Wastewater Energy/electricity, $124,000. Wastewater Professional Services, $220,000. Wastewater Treatment Plant Chemicals, $20,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, due to circumstances outside of our control, energy/electricity, chemical and necessary professional service prices, in parentheses, flood disposal, have increased in FY2024. As such, we are requesting $364,000 to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings to cover this shortfall. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation, amount requested, $4,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Recycling. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, hazardous waste disposal prices have increased in FY2024. As such, we are requesting $4,000 to be transferred from Free Cash to cover the shortfall. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $110,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Fuel. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, we have experienced a shortfall in the FY24 budget for Fuel, for the city vehicle fleet and heating oil. We are requesting $110,000 to be transferred from Free Cash to the city Fuel Account to finish out the fiscal year. This account pays for all city vehicles, not just DPW. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation, amount requested, $120,581.06 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, $120,581.06, to be transferred to FY20 COVID-19 FEMA Grant, $120,581.06. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to cover grant deficits. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $9,800 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, to be transferred to COA Ad-Hoc Building Committee. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to develop a report for the mayor and the council on aging, including expenses for consultation for research and facilitation, survey software, postage, printing, mailing and meeting supplies. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested, $15,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Planning Professional Services. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, consulting work during Planning Director Transition.
Point of information, Mr. President. I appreciate all the work that goes into preparing these. However, just to keep things transparent for the public, I think it's important that we not identify our transfers by line item.
I have the answer.
Yeah, you have the answer. Excellent. That's my point because it would be very untransparent and I'm not sure it would meet all the criteria. Thank you.
Do we need a second first?
Yes.
Before we discuss?
That's correct. I have a motion and a seconds to schedule a public hearing in this chamber, June 5 at 6:15. And for one transfer and 17 appropriation, any further discussion?
To Finance Committee.
And to send it to Finance Committee. Thank you. To the clerk to remind me that. I do have an answer. About the official $29,188.05, basically that's not an appropriation that is redirecting, reminding funds from the safety complex IT. That's why they don't have a, from Free Cash or any other account. It's because they're basically redirecting some funds.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any further discussion? Consular Denham? Any other consulars? Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes. I will take.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Please stay with us. We have to sign a lot of stuff. Thank you, everybody.